Good evening, residents. I'm glad you could attend. Today is Tuesday, September 15th. It's 7:05 and we're going to start the regular meeting. Stand up, do your pledges. It's coming in, sir. Pledges. Let's have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, we have a roll call, please.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Okay, so first thing on our agenda this evening is review and approval of prior meeting minutes. And we have no minutes to approve, so we'll go to old business. The only thing on old business is Boomer Blacktop invoice and purchase order.
We discussed this and I'm just going to say that the PO needs to be signed in the mailbox. I think that's all discussion we need about my opinion.
I'd like to make one more comment, the fact that there was a resolution written originally to give that work to J&amp;A. And it was Resolution Number 20 national 35. That resolution does not state to give it to anybody else, just J&amp;A. And they didn't take it. And then somehow or another, I'm not sure how, it was given to Boomer Blacktop. I called them, they told me that Mr. Mann, excuse me, no, no, no. Mr. McGuire and Mr. Wolf gave them the approval to proceed. And then we did a resolution after work was done. So being this was done in a, I don't know what even call, it used a lot of different words to describe it. I will not be signing the PO check. So, any other comments? New business.
I've got another open.
Okay.
Mr. McGuire, meeting minutes. Have you talked to anybody about, this is now September, we have no meeting minutes for the year. Have you talked to anybody about getting those anyone a word for word? You stated that you're going to get a court transfer or somebody to type on word for word. Have you found anybody who's done anything about that yet?
I think some of that got sent back to the lady that we originally hired for that.
Do you? Do you know who did that? I just want to make sure we're getting them back because we need them because come all the time, they're going to be, first thing, they're going to write us up again with no meeting minutes.
I've got a question for you. You're posting the audio of our meetings, but there's nothing in there stating, you're kind of misleading the public because there's nothing in there stating that that's the official record.
No, it's not the official record, but I'm just putting that up there for people to call you guys and say, where's the meeting minutes? At least that you can say, the audience out there were working on the meeting minutes.
Well, I think as far as the minutes are concerned, we can count on taking a hit for that, giving the law says that we've got to prepare the meetings promptly, so they definitely have not been prepared promptly, so.
But you still got to have the meeting minutes. So we just going to keep going, we're going to keep going and not getting them done? That's, that's my question, so. You guys can act on it or just let it keep going. If that's what you plan on doing, you don't want me bringing it up again. I'm done with it here.
Do we want to use the same person that we used before until we find someone?
That's a question trustee.
I think we need to fast track that process as quickly as we can get caught up.
Are you going to, if you do the same question, are you going to use the same process? Because I've already stated that I will be not spending all my days and hours sitting there proofreading the minutes. So may I also have to take that one?
Well, we had agreed to do, you know, since the audio was out there, we had agreed in the previous year to do and had a system set up. We were just going to do the outline of the meeting. And in the meeting when I went here, you guys passed the resolution to do it word for word. So there again, I still don't believe it. We need it word for word. Nobody else in the area does it word for word. And that's Jim's, Jim's idea. He wants it done. He's for different reasons, so, I'm ready for that.
So with Jim's idea, what Mr. Mann did agree on, so basically just the board of trustees, I guess. So you guys guys decide together what you're going to do. And how you're going to do it. But again, my voice, my input is, I am not spending all my working hours listening to take this proofreading because one of the lady we had in anybody, because they're not at this meeting. They don't know Mr. McLaughlin's voice. They don't know Mr. Rowley's voice. They just put nine down. So it's not as accurate as you think. And then we got a lot of stuff in those minutes that says ten audible. Because you can't understand. And then if the citizens don't stand up and say so and so from such a such address, they don't know. So, I mean, now the lady knows better that she's been doing this, so she's getting to know some of those regular voices, but she doesn't know all of them. So I just want to put those inputs because I worked with her and I know those facts. But it was not an easy task. And I have plenty to do without all the minutes. But and one more fact, we hired the administrative system when I came in here to do minutes. We did not hire them to do word for word minutes. I understand that's too much a task for anybody to do. But that was not my task to tie the minutes. That was what the administrative assistant was to do. And they got out of turn, they got out of turn with job description. So what I'm saying is that was not in for me to do, and I can't complain. It was administrative assistant. So I just meant you guys to understand that. And so I'm done with that. That was all that I wanted to get.
Any, any new business?
I have a couple of questions on the Blacktop. Sent you an email on Friday, September 4th. Regarding, basically, comments and allegations against our road staff. Are you prepared to bring forth anything written regarding their employee performance?
How am I giving any written performance to the police on our own road plan, like Steve?
Well, you're on record in meetings. You and your wife are on record in social media complaining about roads nitpicking their work. So my question to you is, do you have anything constructive for these folks, or is this just?
I spoke with two of the road guys this past year out on the road. I have no problem with road employees at all. I have a problem with Manny.
Okay, so is it safe to go with you have no formal complaints against any road staff?
That's correct.
And Mr. Wolf?
No. Nope.
That's all you got with this?
Okay, any other new business? You're going to send me that email again, please. Send that, you said you sent me, send email on September 4th. Please send that to me again. Any other new business? It's the same date, that's the same date you wrote that letter, isn't it? On our township letter, Ed? That's, that's September 4th. Any other new business?
I don't know what was written on Friday.
Yeah. Okay, next is the fiscal office report. Tracy?
Okay, so on the table, did you do the fund summary, I think, I didn't check, but I think you did. You guys got the appropriation fund summary and comparison of what they appropriated in your folder, financial report? This is not the next, begin the next month to give all the other reports. After I do the bank reconciliation. We discussed where we were as far as the budget and issues with and that, but we're catching up, we're getting better. We just got to keep pushing, going slow. It's a slow process, but hopefully we'll get there and then we'll have it, we'll have it together. So we're working. Just have to keep communication. Communication is the key. As I said before, I want to emphasize, I need you guys to call me if there's an issue. Sit down with me, tell me what you got, need me to get, we'll work it. I mean, if you, if you have somebody else telling me you have no access to UAM, that doesn't help me help you. Tell me yourself. If that's the case. If you're not getting enough information, tell me what you need. Tell me exactly what you need. I'll get it for you. Again, like I said, Mr. Mann had no problem getting what he needed from me. I'm using Mr. Mann because we're trustee, when he trusted. He called me just recently and he got what he needed. I mean, I think we saw this Boomer Blacktop as well, there's no more displays on that. So that's all I have to say on my financial report.
I'd like to make-
Other than, please, get up and sign those invoices and POs.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal office report. Pay, pay the vouchers, excuse me, pay the warrants, invoices, appropriations.
I second the motion.
We motion on the floor to accept fiscal office report. Call our roll call, please. Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
No.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Fiscal office report is accepted. Thank you. Okay, next is resolutions. One on the agenda, we have two to do though. The first one is, Tracy, you have a number, please?
So you had a special meeting on 9, 10, 20, 20. There was only one resolution, correct?
Yeah, that resolution never actually been written, has it?
I think you guys signed the, the paper that was on, whatever, because I got it in the tail.
Okay.
And that was Resolution 20-078, so this would be 20-079.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a resolution on the floor, 20-079. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees accepted resignation of four part-time firefighters, backslash EMTs from the Jefferson Township Fire Department. Matthew Frederick, Brian Kramer, Logan Levesey, Jennifer Smiley.
I second motion.
Uh, nobody's made the motion yet. I was reading it.
Okay.
So somebody, if you want to do it, then I'll second it, but you are-
I make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 20-079.
I'll second it. So we have a motion on the floor to accept Resolution 20-079. Any questions?
Are we going to get copies of that resolution?
Which one?
The resignation one?
Is that in your packet? Not in there?
Let's see.
This should be after the fiscal office report. The title, can you?
Okay, give a roll call, please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries. You good, Roy?
Yeah.
So we have another resolution to discuss, Resolution Number 20-080. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees do hereby raise the pay rates for fire department to begin with the 2/27/2020 payable period. We discussed this in the work session and any more discussion or questions on it?
Can you provide your method of mind?
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution 20-080.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 20-080. Any questions? Here, roll call, please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, Mr. Wolf, we have another resolution that we just crafted today due to an issue that we became aware of late last night. Do you want to do that at this time or with the fire department report?
In the business.
Well, your resolutions, lots of doing.
Mr. President, we had a grant years ago for the Zoll Auto Pulses. These are the devices that we place someone on to automatically do CPR for us. The batteries on these have a shelf life or an operating life of about three years. I was made aware of yesterday, late, yesterday afternoon, evening, that our batteries are dying at a fast pace. Called the rep, finally got ahold of who they were. They called me back. We are on our, just at the end of this month, our fourth year of three-year cycle batteries. So these things are going really quick. They're $800 per battery. And we had three per board with one in the board, one in reserve in the case, and one on charge. So I called them, got a price on this. They told us that these could be covered under the CARE Act as consumables to assist crews with doing CPR and not having to be down close to the patient, getting anything out of their mouth or their nose on the patients. Also, the auto pulse life bands, which is what actually does the constricting of the chest. They are listed in the COVID-19 CARES Act as usable consumable items, so. Placed a request. She gave me a quote, and again, it's $10,476 that we want to appropriate money aside and then go ahead and order these. So that's what this resolution, sorry for the late notice, but we just found out last night about this.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-081.
I second motion.
We have a resolution on the floor to adopt, we have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 20-081. Any questions?
Now, why are we appropriating $30,000 when we need $10,005?
Well, it says on there that the rest will be set aside for future purchases, I believe Tracy and Ms. Edwards said. If this is not appropriated or allocated by October 15th, it goes back to the government. So again, the discussion today between Chief Lutz on financing and Ms. Edwards on a conference call here. They said go with $30,000, spend this, and then have the rest allocated so it doesn't go back to the government. It can be used for anything township-wide.
So my, my just, so you guys understand. I had a meeting today to get some clarity and we have, I told you before, we have $59,000, the first draw, and 29, it's going to change, about. So it's about 59, 60, and 30. About $9,000 approximately we have in this COVID CARES Act. And we have to appropriate it by October 15th, use it by December 31st. Now, there is a Senate bill that is passed in the Senate already, waiting for a representative, that may move there another month. But right now, we only know October 15th. So with that being said, besides what he's just done here in this resolution, we also need to decide what we're going to do with the rest of that money soon to appropriate it. We don't have to use it, we have to appropriate it, have something to use it by. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Here, roll call, please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so next is departmental reports. Code enforcement's not here. We've got reports for Amber.
Tony, Tony Colton's sick today. He's been sick for two days now. Going to seek medical help, but he wanted me to make a couple highlights for you trustees. He'd been working on filing the final high lead mowing nuisance assessment letters the rest of this week. You'll have them out by the end of the week. That's the last letters going out for 2020. That, the notices toll over 100 properties, and then the road department will be assisting to start mowing them 100-plus properties before or during leaf season. Tony's report, he wanted you to know, will be included at the next trustee meeting since he was not in today to prepare it. And then last thing is, last two things, he's working with the county sheriff, a couple recovery companies to prepare for the cleanup of the hole on 131 Lutheran Road that has been an eyesore for years. And then the last thing is, this last Friday, Tony delivered the beautification award. So anyone that wants to see the house that was selected can go on the website. It's right on the front of the township website now. When you open up the website, and it shows the hole that was selected. And that's notes that Tony knew we were tonight.
Okay, Sheriff's Department? City Department?
Yes, John has four payments for permits fiscal officer to give you. One is in the amount of $100. They're all $100. There's four of them, but there's cash with one of them. So I'll be good, I'll bring those up to you now.
Thank you, Steve.
Welcome. And John's report will be included first in the month as well.
Road Department?
You have your reports in front of you, trustees. I thank you for considering, for thinking, or talking about trying to get some accounts set up for charge accounts for our department. Because we do not want our workers using their own credit cards to buy anything, plus we shouldn't put them in that position. So anybody that has any kind of road, road issues, they can call and let us know and we'll address it.
Can I start before that?
Yeah.
I just want to correct, one of these payments was for $75,004.
Okay.
Just to make sure that's on record.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. That's good that you correct that. So that's all I have for the road department.
Steve, you said there was four payments?
He gave me four. There's four sheets.
You got another one back there?
No. He gave me four.
There's one, another, I got two checks and a check.
There should have been three checks there. Just not.
One.
All right, we'll go with John to make sure.
Okay, two, three.
Maybe it was three, but he said it was four. So I put it, he gave me a folder with it. So we'll check with him in a moment.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have a question on the road.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me, I'm sorry, I want to check that first. You gave me something else. This one?
No, that's the rest of my, yeah.
That's what, I was like, what is this?
Yeah, it's under stuff.
This is your, oh, this is your, okay.
Okay, sure, that's.
Go ahead, check.
Yep, very direct, so last call.
I'm just trying to make sure I didn't pass something.
He said there was four, and he put it in his envelope, he was doing something.
Okay, you stated in your, you mentioned something about working issue two plate with the county engineer choice wanted to try retain it instead of losing it. You have any further?
Well, there was two parts to that too, and I didn't put the other part is, they're trying to, in their engineering, they're trying to save all the pavement that was done in that area. So, and they, they haven't given us the okay, but the engineer study that will be done before they ever sublet the contract if it goes forward, obviously, a lot of it is. But if it goes forward, they're, they believe they can save some of that deep patch. Because it had to be deep patched anyway.
So that's the study they're going to before we-
Right.
Okay, that's one. Saying you're working on 2021 road budget.
Starting to do that now.
Also, I didn't, what I didn't bring up to you guys is I did get, we usually have it by now, we usually suppose it approved by October, but we got to November to approve the tax budget. And since we had to November, I have it ready. I just didn't prepare for this meeting, or prepare for the next meeting. So that's the next thing that we need to probably maybe have, if the work session is not full, which I think, no, I'll use it on the second, second October. If we can maybe have that as a next work session and talk about and understand this tax budget, because I think there's something you guys might probably want to understand. If not, let me know and I'll just present the tax budget resolution and we'll go from there. So there's a, that gives Steve Dan the idea of what he has to work with. And that's why I asked that question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
No, is it?
Just for all for the road, did you do the management?
No, he hasn't answered that.
Okay, okay.
I have a question for the road department. I'm just curious why in the middle of summer, we're not using hot patch or why we're using cold patch? Cold patch, in my history of this, is you use cold patch in winter time, with asphalt plants being open. Because we made comments before about using cold flat patch because the asphalt plants aren't open. Is there a reason why we can't use hot patch when we patch in holes in roads?
We haven't, but there was one day that they used cold patch as a timing. But all we got, the receipts that Tracy has gotten from the cold, or the hot patch from the valley.
Okay, thank you.
You know what, I have another question, I'm sorry. You going to, you said in the road report, Ohio State Extension, you want us to hold another week class at Cady Mazzana?
Well, the, the director of the Montgomery County Parks wants to hold a class. He needed us to ask us if we had anybody that would like to go through the class, and we said yes. So we both approached Montgomery County Park District and Jefferson Township Road Department has approached the extension about holding a class. So they don't have to drive to Springfield or over to Reynoldsburg.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about this.
So sort of a friendly phone call, it said, do you guys have anybody to certify? And we said yes, and they have people as well, so we're trying- So it's sort of a friendly phone call that said, do you guys have anybody to certify? And we said, yes, and they have people as well, so we're trying to.
But it's not, it's not going to be free, right?
I don't know about that at this point.
Probably has some issues that take one digit, like, like that payment.
I remember, I remember.
What happened too is the class, we did try to hold, half the students weren't able to participate because of tornadoing it. And their, their communities wouldn't let them come to the class because they're taking care of the tornado. So we were, you know, we had limited number of students.
So that's what this brought, that, that's something.
Yeah, before we even get to the cost thing, you all know what the cost is ahead of time, and you'll have to approve the appropriation.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Wolf?
I agree.
Okay.
Our department?
What I gave you is your, the month of report last month. We've got several openings in the fire department right now. A lot of people have quit because of rumors. And we had talked to several new people. They're certified, all except one. And we've got more applications out that people want on the department. Oh, we had some uneasy things going on. When I come on board and I told them that I wasn't going to put up the document, I didn't. And people right now are getting along well. So we're trying to get the department out there and moving forward. I met with ambulance representative today. And I've got one coming in tomorrow. Because we're, we got to get moving forward on this because of the grant that we was awarded. A federal grant. So as soon as.